Mr. Clark. For the dinner bell.
Hi. You don't like cold.
Good life. Oh, I'm a fella.
Four films. Four sound. Four films.
I'm jealous. Just to give you a flavor of the difference tonight in terms of our board meeting, of course, this is the reorganization meeting of the Lawrence Township Board of Education. We are streaming this a different way. Steve and Francis, our technology supervisor, is using one of our neat bars to stream the meeting. This is how we give instruction remotely during the pandemic, and we are trying it out for this meeting this evening. And so we'll begin. My name's Tom Eldridge. I'm the board secretary for the Lawrence Township Board of Education, and this is the reorganization meeting of the Lawrence Township Board of Education. And so what we'll do in this meeting is we're going to set ourselves up for the remainder of the year. So I'll open the meeting with the roll call, open public meetings announcement, and then truly thereafter, we'll do the squaring in of the new board members and welcome them to the Board of Education. After that, we'll have the nomination of the officers, at which time I'll change spots with the new board president, and we'll conduct business. And so we'll begin at this point with the roll call. Ms. Bose.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Ms. Evans.
Here.
Ms. Grover.
Here.
Dr. King.
Here.
Ms. Martinez.
Here.
Ms. Pascoli.
Here.
Ms. Santos.
Here.
Mr. Van Hees. Here. Do we have a quorum? This is the reading of the announcement of the Open Public Meetings Act statement. The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. As required under law, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided via email and/or fax to The Times, the Lawrence Ledger, the Public Library, and has been filed with municipal clerk. This meeting notice was provided prior to the 48 hours required in the Open Public Meetings Act, and the board reserves the right to limit public discussion of personnel items and other matters as defined in the law. Please stand for the swan's in place. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands the Constitution under God, made of this one, the liberty and justice of all. At this point, we're going to have the squaring in of the new board members, and I'd like to square in first Ms. Martinez, our newest board member, and then after that, we'll swear in Mr. Van Hees and Ms. Grover together. But Ms. Martinez, as a special thing, we'd like to bring you up just here so that your family can take pictures and recognize your accomplishment. So please join me here. This is the required oath of school board members that we're reading. I'm going to read the first paragraph, and then I'm going to ask Ms. Martinez to read it back in her own voice, and then we'll do the second, and then that will constitute your swearing in as a board member. So it's, "I, Oga Martinez, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God."
I, Oga Martinez, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Excellent. And now for the second paragraph. "I, Oga Martinez, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of the Board of Education, and that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to statute of legal law," instead of reading it. "nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in the statute, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God."
I, Oga Martinez, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of members of the Board of Education, and that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to...
The statute.
The statute. Nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Welcome to the board meeting. Ms. Grover and Mr. Van Hees, please join me in the same place.
I'm with my achievers in the car, so. Oh, dinner. Do this taste of a picture. Oh, what a hack.
We'll do the same exact.
Oh, Tom.
Hey. Why do you say we can be here? So we'll read the first paragraph, and we'd like to do it together.
Yes.
Okay.
Except I won't say Kevin, I'll say you.
And I'll just say your name.
Okay.
So it's, "I, in your name, do solemnly swear affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God."
I, Kevin Van Hees, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Now for the second part. "I, in your name, do solemnly swear or affirm that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of the Board of Education, and that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to statute nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in statute, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God."
I, Tilly Derrick, do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of the Board of Education, and that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to statute nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in the statute. That I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations. Your vote, welcome back. For our new members and our rejoining members, this is a box. I'd ask that you kindly sign that, it's in the first picture line, and then return it to me, and then there'll be another one for you to sign, and I'll give you your copy back. You'll keep the colored copy for yourself. Okay, you've come to the point in our agenda where we're nominating officers. So we're going to nominate the officer president first, and then followed by vice president. Some things that I'll remind you of, and that is there is no second required for a nomination, there is only a nomination, which means if there are two people who are nominated, if I call the role and the first person receives the majority of the votes, that person is automatically placed into that office. I do that because oftentimes we don't want to hurt people's feelings when they're nominated, and so we'll vote in thinking that we have another chance to vote. We do not. The person who receives the most votes in terms of majority of the votes in the first go around, that person is nominated, and I call it, and I do the role, and that person receives five, they are automatically appointed for that position. Okay? So, are there any nominations for president of the Board of Education? I'll take them now.
I'd like to nominate Michelle Bose as president of the school board.
And we have the nomination of Michelle Bose made by Ms. Grover. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none. Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Ms. Evans.
Yes.
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Dr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Martinez.
Yes.
Ms. Pascoli.
Yes.
Ms. Santos.
Yes.
Mr. Van Hees.
Yes.
Ms. Bose, have you voted, and do you accept the nomination?
I vote yes in my gladly. So, now...
Second point, I'd love to do at the opening for nominations.
Yes. You're accepting nominations for a vice president. I would like to nominate Mrs. Derrick as vice president. Thank you. Tom? Are there any other nominations? No other nominations.
Ms. Bose.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Ms. Evans.
Yes.
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Dr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Martinez.
Yes.
Ms. Pascoli.
Yes.
Mr. Van Hees.
Yes.
And Ms. Santos, do you accept the nomination?
Happily accept.
Yes, please. The offices of the Constitution. It's the time of the office. I can make a call.
Yes. So we're going to hand out two to everybody, correct?
Just one.
Just one?
But there's a lot to do.
And hands if you need it. So we're going to leave the board member code of ethics about. I will read the first one, and then we'll just start with Oga, and each person will take a code of ethics until all of them are out, and then we will sign it and date it on the back. A school board member shall abide by the following code of ethics for school board members. Number one, I will uphold and enforce all laws, regulations, rules of the State Board of Education, and court orders pertaining to schools. Desire changes shall be brought about only through legal and ethical procedures.
I will make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children, and will seek to develop and maintain public schools that meet the individual needs of the children regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing.
Three, I will confine my board action to policymaking, planning, and appraisal, and I will help frame policies in advance only after the board has consulted with those who will be affected by them.
And four, I'll carry out my responsibilities not to administer schools, but together with my fellow board members to see that they are well drawn.
Five, I will recognize that authority rests with the Board of Education, and will make no personal promises nor take any private action that may compromise the whole.
Six, I will refuse to surrender my independent judgment to special interests from partisan political groups, or to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends.
Seven, I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools, which, if disclosed, would needlessly injure individuals or the schools. In all other matters, I will provide accurate information, and in concert with my fellow board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of the community for its schools.
Eight, I will vote to appoint the best qualified personnel available after consideration of the recommendations of the chief administrative officer.
Nine, I will support and protect school personnel and proper performance of activities.
Ten, I will refer all complaints to the chief administrative officer, and will act on the complaints at public meetings only after failure of an administrative solution.
Thank you. Everybody could just write their name and sign it. Do not have any student representatives, or school leaders, any recognition, relatives? No. No adoption of minutes, and reports to the board. All right. Happy New Year, Lawrence Township community. First of all, welcome back our two incumbents, Mr. Van Hees and Ms. Grover, and welcome to the board officially, although we're very excited. And welcome back, ladies, to the front table here. Appreciate you. It's going to be a great start to the new year. We are so excited and warmed by seeing the faces of our kids come back today, albeit it was a short week, so we said to them, "You could do this." We were very excited to have them back today. You know, schools opened very smoothly, our administrative team was welcoming and ready to receive them with optimism. I personally wanted to express my heartfelt gratitude to this Board of Education for their support in approving the leadership team's trip to strengthen our global partnerships. On January 22nd, we look forward to presenting to the full Board of Education what our overseas travel were like. I plan, we plan to represent as a team to really talk about the impact and influence that we had with these global relationships and the time that we spent over in China and Taiwan. It was truly extraordinary, and we can't wait to share with you our journey. These global partnerships continue to enrich our district by fostering growth, innovation, and a deeper understanding for learning. They help us to enrich our practices, and quite frankly, these partnerships just around the world have had us grow in such ways that we're still trying to kind of process and comprehend this experience. It was truly remarkable. The educators and the students that we came across overseas in Beijing and Shanghai and Taiwan were truly extraordinary, so I want to thank the board for that opportunity. And I want to publicly thank the leadership team for standing in the gap for us and really, you know, making sure that things were suited as we left here for winter break. I'm wishing everyone a fantastic start to 2025. My message is simple, it's a short week, enjoy getting back into the swing of things, and I look forward to another year of success with the Board of Education. Thank you. Thank you so much. Board secretary report.
Before you sign on the agenda under the SPM statute, it is a significant decision. This is the decision to move forward with our referendum. Before you, this evening, for your consideration is the resolution, or two resolutions actually approved. There's a resolution there regarding the submission of the adoption of the referendum question. There is a second one that accepts the PECs, the preliminary eligible costs, which is the state's offering. We received more state aid than we originally anticipated, and it's just fantastic for Lawrence Township Public Schools. I'd like to reiterate that the only way Lawrence Township Public Schools receives assistance from the state is through debt service aid, and to receive debt service aid, you must bond. And so a referendum is a vote to the people, the people vote on whether or not to allow the school districts to bond. If the referendum passes, the district will raise the necessary funding to fulfill the educational program by way of construction. And so what we're proposing on the agenda by way of this vote here tonight to accept this is to move ahead with the educational program of Lawrence into the business future. The last piece is ministerial, and that is the setting of the polling times. In our discussions, this referendum and election will be, as far as we set it up, be as familiar as possible, the polling times, places, and things of that nature, so that people are as comfortable as possible with the situation and routines such that what they do on their annual elections, they're going to be explained. So before you this evening is the resolution. If you approve this, the next day we will file with the Mercer County Clerk and various other governmental agencies, and we will move forward with a great, enormous amount of excitement towards our referendum. So that is what I've got for you this evening. If there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Tom. For president report. Good evening. I am thrilled to once again be president for the Board of Education. I wanted to thank all of the board members for the nomination and express my deep gratitude on this journey that we are taking together. We have so much going on over the upcoming year, and I could not be more privileged and honored to have board members like you all. And I want to congratulate Joanne and Kevin on their win and welcome Oga. I'm so excited. I know that together, we're going to do some really great things for Lawrence Township. One of the things that has been on my mind over the past couple of months that I've had the privilege of working with Robin is sort of looking at ways that we can be more efficient in the new year. One of the things that I wanted the board to consider for this year is collapsing the Community Relations and Legislative Affairs Committee and establish a much-needed ad hoc referendum reconfiguration committee, which will actually turn into a liaison report on the agenda moving forward. So we would get rid of that meeting of community relations and make it a reconfiguration committee for the foreseeable future. And this will allow us to turn our attention to the pressing matters of the district for the upcoming future. We can make a motion at our next meeting on January 22nd to memorialize this. If everyone is in agreement, we can discuss it if you're not. In the meantime, I will be sending all board members a survey over the next day or two so that we can assign committees and chair people for the committees. We'd like to have this done for our next board meeting, so get that done as quickly as possible, and establish meeting dates for the rest of the year. And just as a follow-up to Tom about our upcoming referendum, the public can expect many forms of messaging so that everyone is an informed voter on March 11th for the district's bond referendum. Absentee ballots will also be counted. And as a wonderful opportunity for the public, we will be holding a community conversation at the middle school, at the LMS. It'll be for the middle school and the high school families on January 14th at the media center of the high school at 6:30 PM. We will also be hosting a direct link town forum where everyone in our community is welcome, whether you have students in the school or you don't, on February 4th in the auditorium at the middle school. Both of these will be great opportunities for us to present things about what's going on with the referendum and answer questions and clear up misconceptions that may be out there regarding the referendum and what does it mean for Lawrence Township. We are really excited about it, and I hope that everybody is getting the word out to be an informed voter. It's a privilege to vote, it's a privilege to have a say in what goes on, and we really want to encourage our community to give us feedback and answer the questions that they might have. I want to wish everybody a happy and healthy 2025, and thank you to Dr. Clem for all she's done last year, and all of the administrators in our schools. It's been a really incredible year for us in Lawrence Township. I wish everybody a great year. Okay. That, we do not have any committee reports tonight, we have no liaison reports, any review of communications, none. This is our first opportunity for public input. If somebody is interested in any kind of comment. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. We do not have any board discussion and work session items, and next will be personnel action items. There are none. Okay. CIA PD. We'll go with Pepper, if you'd like to.
Yes.
Yes, we do.
OIS one, and OSS one and two.
How we did not need, you can see on your agenda there, free items. And I would like to move OIS one and OSS one and two.
Second. Tom with a motion and a second.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Ms. Evans.
Yes.
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Dr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Martinez.
Yes.
Ms. Pascoli.
Yes.
Ms. Santos.
Yes.
Mr. Van Hees.
Yes.
Ms. Bose.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. School business management action items.
Yes, as Tom had indicated at the beginning of the meeting, these are two resolutions that officially kick off our referendum, so with that, I would probably move SPM one and two.
Second. The motion is second.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Ms. Evans.
Yes.
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Dr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Martinez.
Yes.
Ms. Pascoli.
Yes.
Ms. Santos.
Yes.
Mr. Van Hees.
Yes.
Ms. Bose.
Yes.
Your motion carried.
So, I'll choose a little reorg.
Did we miss one here?
It's the reorganization. It's the reorganization of public input.
Okay.
Okay. Reorganization item. Motion to approve the Board of Education holds its regularly monthly meetings on the following dates at 6:30 PM for the calendar year in accordance with NJSA ATA10-6, and that meeting shall begin in closed session at 6:30 PM and transition to open session at 7:00 PM. And that meeting will be held at Lawrence High School located at 2525 St. Mike, Lawrenceville, New Jersey, unless otherwise noted. Meeting dates are listed as follows, and with that, I'd like to move R1. Second. That's okay. Take your time.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Ms. Evans.
Yes.
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Dr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Martinez.
Yes.
Ms. Pascoli.
Yes.
Ms. Santos.
Yes.
Mr. Van Hees.
Yes.
Ms. Bose.
Yes. And it's our second opportunity for public input. Yep, seeing none. New business items. Do you want to do that? Sure. There's NV1 through 3, and it looks like a pre-work called contract hours and goal times, and I'd like to do NV1 through NV3, please. Second. Tom with a motion and a second.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Ms. Evans.
Yes.
Ms. Grover.
Yes.
Dr. King.
Yes.
Ms. Martinez.
Yes.
Ms. Pascoli.
Yes.
Ms. Santos.
Yes.
Mr. Van Hees.
As I do mop up, I will just say yes and congratulate Mr. Desai with his disappointment, whose family is also here, so enthusiastic, yes.
Yes. Mr. Desai to the Lawrence Township Public School family. We are super excited to see back there, and of course, Oga's family is here. This is the most people we're going to see at a board meeting, and I'm so proud and happy for our district, for so many wonderful people joining us. So welcome to Mr. Desai and Ms. Martinez. I also, before we leave, would like to take an opportunity for some pictures before we all gather. It is a special night for us with so many new people. Welcome to our family, and I think... Yeah, let's call for just a few minute recess so we can take some pictures. Thank you. Five minutes? Five minutes recess. Okay. Five minute recess. Ready, go. Oh, bring your family over.
Yeah, bring your family over.
Yeah, bring your family over.